Next time, Ms. Director of Community Development regarding 517 East Broadway, Medical General Offices and Retail. Request for adoption of mitigated negative declaration approval of a combined Stage One and Two Design Review, approval of a creative sign, and approval of an instrument imposing covenants on real property for construction of a new five-story, three, two thousand five hundred square foot commercial medical general offices and retail uses. Two A is a resolution adopting a mitigated negative declaration, E is a motion approving Stage One and Two Design Review, C is a motion approving creative sign, and D is a motion approving an instrument imposing covenants on real property.
Ms. Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we'll go to Milka Toledo, senior planner.
Before we do that...
I may have a conflict of interest, so at this time I leave the room.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Board of -- Council members. My name is Milka Toledo, and I will be introducing the project before you, which is a request to adopt a mitigated negative declaration. Prepared for the project, also approve Stage One and Two Final Design Review and Creative Sign, subject to staff's recommendations and the instrument imposing covenants for the property proposed for the development of 517 East Broadway, which is to construct a medical general office and retail building. The proposed project was filed prior to the DSP code amendments, and therefore it is considered a pipeline project, subject to the previous DSP standards prior to the changes that recently took place. The project does comply with the previous DSP standards, including parking. No variances are proposed, but it also complies with most of the standards included in the current DSP standards that you recently approved, including the goals and objectives of those standards. They are proposing a five-story, approximately thirty-two thousand five hundred square-foot commercial building consisting of seven thousand six hundred and ninety-eight square feet of medical office space, twenty-one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet of general office space, three thousand five hundred and fifty-two square feet of ground-level retail space, one thousand eight hundred and nine square feet of landscaped publicly-accessible open space, and seventy-one space underground parking structure is being proposed. And the applicant is Todd Lynch. As relates to CEQA, the environmental impacts identified in the mitigated neg deck are associated with cultural resources, so all other impacts are either no impacts or less than significant. And in order to reduce those environmental impacts associated with cultural resources to less than significant levels, there are mitigation measures that are included as part of the project, and that would include that if any remains or objects are encountered during activities associated with the project, then all work will stop and the appropriate agencies will be contacted, including the Native American Tribe. In terms of the location, the project is located in the DSP East Broadway District. The district features residential mixed use and commercial mixed use as well. The subject site is located on the northwest corner, this is a very familiar location to all of us, of Broadway and Isabel Street, so it's directly west of us. Currently, the site is developed with a one-story, three thousand nine hundred and seventy-six square-foot medical office building, built approximately around nineteen forty-eight, and the adjacent surface parking lot operated by the medical offices for Dr. New Bargenoid, All for Health, Health for All. The property faces Broadway and Isabel Street with a third frontage facing north toward the alley and the neighboring police station. The subject site is adjacent to the Glendale Civic Center campus, including, again, the police headquarters to the north, City Hall to the east, and one-story commercial buildings extending towards the west from the project site, and larger three- and four-story buildings that rise across the street to the south along Broadway. The existing site plan, or the site is twelve thousand eight hundred -- twelve thousand eighty-six square feet, that's before the dedication, and eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty-one after dedication. In terms of the site plan, the new proposed development will occupy the majority of the site. Pedestrian access to the building will be from Broadway and Isabel Street, and vehicular access to the site is from the alley along the north side, where there will be a ramp proposed leading to the subterranean parking garage. The ground floor extends the pattern of the storefront retail all the way to the corner, where there's a dramatic slope glass form and the plaza entry that will be leading to the main entry. This project is using the public open space incentives to increase the FAR in height. In this case, the project proposes 2.74 FAR, and the height will be increased to five stories, sixty-nine feet, eight inches. In terms of mass and scale, the proposed height and massing of the building is appropriate to the surrounding urban context. It provides various areas of articulation at street facades to -- that are accomplished through receding and projecting building volumes, and angled east facade which tilts away from the street, as well as open spaces that are carved into the building volumes to create entries, terraces, and balconies. And also, the use of varied materials and textures help break up the massing, and at the street corner, above the ground floor, the height and the bulk is modulated by the recessed balconies. And again, the angular form combined with the recesses that are being proposed at the corner mitigates any imposing building mass as viewed from the street, while at the same time reinforcing the character of the building at the street corner. An interesting and unique feature on the building is the irregular spacing of the metal fins at the east facades and the use of the fritted glass at the curtain walls, not only appropriately articulate it by aesthetic clouding the building mass along the south and east facades, but it also uniquely articulates the facade and gives it the building character. And this, again, is accomplished through the building's design and use of material, which leads us to design material and the creative sign. So I've alluded to some of them and the building materials, so I won't go into too much detail, but I'd like to mention that the building's color scheme varies from light to dark hues in the metallic fins and the curtain wall frames, and the ceramic fritting on the interior surfaces of the glass creates a patterns varying density and character. So during the evening hours, the building interior will be lit with the LED fixtures designed to illuminate the building through those decorative metal fins and the curtain wall fins on the ground floor and also in the public spaces. So in summary, the building's design and materials underscores the goals and intent of the DSP, which requires that new buildings address the street in ways that reinforce and enliven the pedestrian activity and also enhance the ground-level architectural elements on human scale. As far as some comments that staff had regarding the west facade, let me bring that up really quick, since we're on the design section. We have two conditions that staff is suggesting on the west facade, and that would be to expand the vertical concrete elements and reduce the height of that wall. So the details that you see at the corner, because this is a wall that is located right on the property line, no windows or openings are allowed. And that, again, is because it's on the property line, and that would be per the Building Code of Regulations. So in order to, again, reduce the mass, again, we're suggesting that they take that treatment that they are proposing on the score lines at the corner and extend it towards the north side of that wall. And again, also reducing the height of the wall to, again, mitigate that monolithic or mass appearance of the wall as one sees it from the west side. As far as the creative sign, that is also included as part of your motion. They are proposing a sign to identify the building on the east facade. It is approximately eight feet tall and forty feet long. Again, the sign is at the core -- the building's south corner on the east face, and it would be readily visible for vehicular, pedestrian, traffic, again, traveling westbound on Broadway. And the letters are formed by variation in depth of the fins themselves, so by day it will be readable as a shadow and by night by backlighting. Once again, the project will be using the incentive to increase their height and floor area, and with that, they will be required to include publicly accessible open space, or that's what they have opted to choose. So the publicly accessible open space and access to the uses within the building are successfully laid out. They are proposing approximately one thousand eight hundred and nine square feet of publicly-accessible opens and landscaped open space along the east side of the building facing Isabel Street. And that area will be integrated into the existing brick paving that's already there. They're incorporating pockets of landscaping, and the applicant will go into more detail, and a meandering parkway, it's programmed, or meandering walkway, and it's also programmed with seating, benches, lighting, and other design elements to enliven and attract pedestrian activity in that area. Lastly, before I conclude my remarks, I would like to mention that we do have a, in addition to the conditions outlined in your motion, there is an additional revised motion that staff will be requesting that it be included if you are inclined to approve this project, and that would be that the revised motion include a condition for Stage One, Stage Two, that the preliminary title report be submitted prior to building plan check, so prior to plan check submittal, to confirm ownership of the site for purposes of executing the instrument imposing covenants on real property. And lastly, as far as the recommendation that staff is making, staff is recommending approval of the project with the conditions that we suggest for the west facade outlined in the report is Condition One and Two, and to revise the drawings to indicate that the maximum building height be no greater, does not exceed sixty-nine feet, eight inches, as requested by the police department, and also to provide additional screening when required along the north facade to meet the security goals of the police department as well. And with that, I will conclude my remarks. If you have any questions, I am available to answer them.
I have a question before we go to speakers. The covenants that you referred to are of what nature are these?
Because they are using the incentive for, to increase the height and the F -- and the floor area ratio, and they are also introducing the, or installing the publicly-accessible open space. That is, my understanding, the main reason why we need to include or have the council approve that covenant.
And before we do that, you ask for a title report that shows...
Correct. We just want to confirm and verify for legal purposes as well that they are, in fact, the property owner.
Okay. Are there any questions of Ms. Toledo, Mr. Carpett?
Yes, couple of quick questions. The publicly accessible open space is the one that's facing...
Isabel Street.
Is it?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, because it looks like a choir sitting there. I don't, I can't tell what it is, but this shows a lot, bunch of people in there. So it's about a thousand square feet?
One thousand eight hundred and nine square feet.
One thousand...
One thousand eight hundred and nine.
Okay, one thousand eight hundred and nine. So it's well visible...
Yes, absolutely, yes.
...to everyone, pedestrians, to the traffic, vehicular traffic, and it's very close to the corner.
Yes.
Also, the, when they're using the incentive for height...
Yes.
...they are going from sixty-five foot to sixty-nine, eight, right?
Correct.
So it's, the difference is four, four feet and eight inches.
Correct.
Am I correct? Am I reading this correctly? Because by, by incentives, you can go up to eighty feet...
Eighty, correct.
But they're going from sixty-five to sixty-nine, eight inches.
Yes.
And the FAR from 2.5 to 2.74...
Seven-four.
So point seven, no, point two-four, yeah, point two-four.
Yes, you're correct.
The FAR, the increase in FAR is point two-four.
Yes, that is correct.
And one other question for the, the wall on the west side. There is a, I don't know, this doesn't have any numbers, so I don't know how to tell. So this, this section here, is it, does this have to be this tall? Is it a security issue from the, because I know they have so many, several outdoor areas, is right next to it on this section, is there an outdoor area?
I believe there is...
On the rooftop area?
Correct. There is open space in that area.
Okay, so because of that open space, that wall has to be that tall, or it could be a little shorter?
I would defer to the applicant just to make sure if it's for security purposes.
Got it.
But that is the wall that we're asking them to look at, reducing...
No, I understand. It's the big blank wall on one side, so, but if you can decrease the height a little bit, it may help as well as, okay, talk about it. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Vine?
Mine is, is about the height, sixty, what is, sixty-nine, eight inches, as requested by the police department, and can you explain that?
Well, they have a heliport on their building, and so they have specific requirements as relates to how tall a building can be located when close to a heliport to not impede or compromise any activity with the helicopter flying onto the police building.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, I will call up our speakers. Now, it's Marcelo Espina, followed by Todd Lynch, Sharif Lynch Architecture.
Mr. Mayor, Honorable Council members, members of staff and the public, good afternoon. We're actually just getting our second model here. There's another one which shows the entire site, which supports our presentation. As I was saying, my name is Marcelo Espina. I'm the partner at Patterns. I'm here with Todd Lynch, who's a partner at Sharif Lynch Architects. Together, we're collaborating in the design of Genoyan Building, the new Genoyan Building at 517 East Broadway, as Milka Toledo just described, only a few steps from where we are right now. It is an honor to come before you today to present what we consider to be an important contribution for the city of Glendale. Let me begin by acknowledging context a little bit. This is maybe clear, but we wanted to kind of make sure that it, that it actually gets underlined. As indicated before, our project faces Glendale Civic Center, which combines buildings from various architectural periods, a loose and unique patchwork of history over a meandering public space. Important to notice are the different styles of these buildings. They are the co-presence of City Hall facing off the mid-century modern county courthouse, or the brutalist building where actually now, or even the more steer corporate police building. Each of these buildings speaks about their own time while establishing a relationship to each other over time. Equally important in this case is the meandering public promenade that connects all these buildings together and all these architectures together, unique in the city because of its scale, pedestrian accessibility, and sense of place. Our project is located just at the edge of this, and in this context and within such important historical dialogue, our proposal aims to extend and enhance this public promenade, creating a significant contemporary addition to this urban ensemble and extending it as well to the public, to the commercial corridor of East Broadway. The Genoyan, as the building will be named, will be home to the medical offices of All for Health and Health for All, a community health center known for its social services to the poor and uninsured within Glendale. The rest of the building will include rentable office spaces, a small amenity in the terras, and a ground-floor retail along both Broadway and Isabel Street, which the client intends to be potentially occupied by a pharmacy on Broadway and a potential small neighborhood cafe facing Isabel Street. Consisting of a total of five floors, including a small amenity at the rooftop, the project will be supported by three and a half levels of underground parking accessible of Isabel Street via the alley. The design, of course, responds to the Glendale downtown-specific plan by varying its massing and scale to acknowledge its neighbors, will become a distinctive part of its context. As a result, the mass is an elaborate composition of step volumes, inset balconies, and open terraces. As seen in this view, facing the alley and the police department building, the cascading series of terraces and greased roof opens up the building, creating both a series of open spaces for the inhabitants as well as bringing natural light into the interior. As seen in the corner view, the building integrates its mass to both the scale and program of its context, acknowledging Broadway as a commercial corridor with ground-level retail and Isabel Street as a more civic front. In terms of image, this is not an ordinary office building. I guess it's pretty clear right now, but, but a socially-engaged contemporary icon with public character, civic identity, and a close dialogue with its neighbors. The reason for this is both simple but important. It is because this building aims to integrate its mission and image within the civic context that it belongs, therefore becoming a potential landmark to the community and representing at the intersection of government, law, and justice, the social significance of health and care. Taking cues from the DSP guidelines on composition and modulation, the building shape is bright and dynamic, holding the corner with a volume that almost appears to hover, and inset balconies which bring occupants out to the street to enjoy views of the street and to the surrounding landscape. This balcony is both separate and unify the composition, coming from Broadway to Isabel and ascending all the way up to the terras, where an outdoor trellis frame significant views of Civic Center and the mountains beyond. As was mentioned before by Milka Toledo, you know, especially as seen from West Broadway, the project creates a form of gateway that anticipates both the presence and scale of Civic Center. It also continues, as is seen here, the retail at ground level. When seen from the corner, the unique form and material circulation, articulation is clear. The Broadway facade's frieted glass silhouette appears in contrast to the Isabel Street facade, which is partially tilted back and cluttered with an irregularly padded brizoleo system. The fine in it all is exterior soffit cluttered with shimmering and embossed chrome metal tiles. You can see this in this picture. As a result, the pedestrian experience, especially from the corner point of view, is both dynamic and engaging, maintaining visual interest, generating contrast, tactility, and an aesthetic As seen here, the fin system unifies the facade, allows for recessed balconies, and protects the building from the sun. Users and the public will enter the building off the corner of Broadway through Isabel Street via triple-high lobby, which is seen here as inset and well demarcated in the, in the composition. Materialized using a combination of stone, metal, and wood, the spacious lobby which you're actually facing literally opens up towards Civic Center, framing views of City Hall to the left and the courthouse to the right, and offering a sense of place to visitors and users alike.
I have a...
Can you play the animation? Todd Lynch will continue.
Okay, I think we have a question first.
I just wanted to ask if you could turn this model around so that Broadway is on our side, so that I can just kind of, kind of picture, and then we'll look at the video, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So Broadway faces us. Is that good for all of you?
Yes.
Because I don't know what I'm looking, I think I'm looking at the alley, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, is that good? I mean, this...
That's Isabel going that way.
Right, okay, good. Thank you, thank you. Great.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of, honorable members of the council and staff, thank you. Again, my name is Todd Lynch of Sharif Lynch Architecture, the other half of the partnership here. So the, if you want to run the animation while we're speaking. Throughout the design process, our team has worked closely with planning and community development to shape the building extents to conform to the DSP and site conditions, such as the two-foot easement to widen the sidewalk along Isabel Street in front of the open space, and then also lower the building height to sixty-nine foot, eight, in order to stay below the helipad level of the neighboring police building. The short animation here helps to show the building in its urban context and how our design connects users and the public at large with the city and the outdoors, and does so functionally, spatially, as well as visually. Our goal is to create a unique aesthetic and cultural setting here in Glendale and a memorable new experience for the city. And then I'll go to the next, okay, thank you. So the site strategy extends the vocabulary of Glendale's downtown-specific plan and Civic Center, bringing the red brick paving of Broadway around the corner to Isabel Street's sidewalk, and then linking that open space proportionally and visually to the neighboring space in front of the police station to the north. Along Broadway, the building facade aligns with those of its neighbors and continues the commercial corridor street wall, so that's an uninterrupted line. The public open space is meant to be inviting and comfortable, creating a small pocket park that offers midday and afternoon shade, convenient access to retail, site furnishings, furnishings such as benches and bike racks, and public art and verdant plantings. Closer to the alley, the small park becomes increasingly lush and more natural, punctuated by patches of native plantings and a meandering pathway to the entry, main entry in the retail space. Public art will also be used here to help create a memorable experience within the new Isabel Street Park. We see here a new piece by the Armenian artist Zerik Zerikian, whom I am happy to say is here with us today in the audience. This piece is entitled Foreigners and consisted a constellation of differently sized and shaped golden figures representing distorted faces which appear to float within a vast black background. The inspiring public mural will invite visitors to reflect on the nature and dimensions of citizenship in today's culture and society. Harmonizing with the building's other metallic tones, we envision this piece becoming a pedestrian-oriented destination in and of itself, an Instagram-worthy background that will celebrate Glendale's culturally diverse community and resonate with both its heritage and its future. The building uses a sophisticated materiality in its expression. Its color palette varies from light to dark hues and includes materials that are on the board, actually behind you, behind the dais there. The, the dark aluminum in the vertical fins, a gray ceramic frit pattern over clear low iron glass, shimmering and embossed chrome metal panels at the soffits, gray cement boards on vertical surfaces in the courtyard and the party wall, and terraced green roofing and solar panels. At the, at the plaza, we'd have red ceramic brick, recycled wood benches, and local plants in the landscape. This combination of crisp surfaces and strong relief will generate a play of light and shadow that will animate the facade at many scales, whether at a distance or close at hand. The main creative sign, just to go back to that quickly, will function as a subtle urban-scale identifier for the building. From a distance and at certain angles, the name Genoyan will appear as a legible relief within the fins. The letters will be formed by the variation in depth of the fins themselves. And when you view it obliquely, the sign will fade away within the surface texture and only will come into focus from particular angles. And by day, the, the letters will be read as shadows, and by night, it would be backlit from the interior of the building without generating any additional light spill relative to the, the normal building operation. So finally, to conclude, we believe this project will be a great addition to the community and the city of Glendale, enhancing the beauty of Glendale Civic Center with health, retail, architecture, public space, landscape, and art, while connecting it forever to the pedestrian activity of the East Broadway Commercial Corridor. Mr. Mayor, honorable council members and staff, it has been a pleasure and an honor to come before you today. We sincerely hope you will support and approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll go to my colleagues on thoughts. I'll start with Mr. Vine.
Okay, well, finally, we have a building that is gorgeous. It's great, looks like great architecture. It's different, it's modulated, it has all those characteristics that we were looking for in the new DSP design standards, and amazingly, you did it before that came, those came to fruition, so congratulations on that. And I'm looking, because I was concerned about if you could put solar on the rooftop. Are you, do you have plans for that?
Yes, we didn't, we didn't mention it, but, let's see, this, okay, yes, that's a, sorry, go back one more. Well, you can see them on the top of the, of this section of the roof, and you can see them in the model here.
Oh.
This entire area is intended for a solar array. It's, let's see.
So you can also see them in the plan, I guess?
It's a...
Oh, I see, yes, yes.
Yes, you can see them there in the rooftop.
Yes, okay.
It's only in the main volume of the corner.
Okay, that, that's great, and...
About forty by fifty.
Okay, and it's gold, it's lead gold, the building?
Well, this is not pursuing certification at this time, but it does meet many of the requirements that would be corresponding to that and the lead calgreen requirements as well. So it does, it does a great deal of stormwater recapture. We have green roofs, we have stormwater management underneath the plaza itself. We'll have native and water-tolerant plant... Drought... Sorry, drought-resistant plantings. We'll have renewable energy, we'll have very energy-efficient... It's going to be an all-electric building, so many measures of green.
Okay, all right. That's good to hear. And the concrete wall facade, you're thinking that maybe that will be lowered? That's that large concrete wall, and you're putting more articulation there more so it doesn't look like quite the blank wall that it does in the drawings?
Yes, so the material forming that will actually have additional joints in it as well, so there will be more of a pattern of those and the ability to texture that than... These renderings were produced some time back, and we've been thinking about that with council since then, or sorry, with staff since then. But in addition, we can look at the height that, you know, lowering it to the degree that's allowable for safety under the building code.
And my last question is, I understand that the art was questionable. You didn't... We weren't... I wasn't sure if you were going to put it in, but you have decided to do that, or you... If that was in the original, and I'm so excited that we have an Armenian artist in our community, that's amazing.
Yes, so that is the intention. The path to this meeting has taken some time, and so part of that was just a matter of timing in order to be able to present that, vis-à-vis the Arts Commission and so on. So the cycle... That has been the intention to include that piece.
So this is... That's a go with the artist?
Yeah. The owner intends to use the dedicated 2% of the building cost to the piece and not pay the 1% in lieu, you know, so as to kind of, you know, improve the building and improve the public space around.
Great, well, I think it's a great building, and I look forward to seeing this one built. Thank you.
And if I'm not mistaken, it's the same artist that did the police...
Yes.
The Police Department mosaic.
Yeah, our project.
Right. Right. So his artwork is known and it's next door. Mr. Quintero.
Yes, I agree. Beautiful building, it's gonna be fantastic on that corner. Happy to see the solar. My only... Or one of two concerns is that wall, for sure, because when you drive east down Broadway, you're basically gonna see a huge wall. So for me, it's not just the height, but actually the extension out to Broadway. Even having railings, I know that there's outside activities on some of the floors, but you've got to get rid of that wall. It just overwhelms. And I personally think it's gonna be a while before a building goes in next door. Those are individually owned parcels, and we may be looking at those little storefronts for a long time to come. But anyway, fantastic look. I guess I'm also a bit concerned over the large sign facing east. I don't know that that is...
The eight-foot by forty-foot sign?
Yeah.
If I can jump in, I think is a little large, and I think it detracts from the unique architecture.
Yeah, I agree. But anyway, I know the doctor's been trying to bring this to fruition for many years. I'm so happy he's gonna realize his dream. And what an addition to that part of the downtown. There's always a lot of activity off of brand, et cetera, but this particular sort of Civic Center needs a boost, and for sure, this is a major, major boost.
Thank you, Mr. Quintero. Mr. Carpetti?
Yes, thank you. First, I'd like to thank you for not only bringing us a PowerPoint presentation, a 3D model of it, and also bringing an actual model so we can take a look at it and see how does this building look, actually look like on that corner, and instead of just a flat rendering of it, because sometimes it's not very easy to visualize from the flat rendering as to how this building is. And then we'll say, is that what I approved? So this will take care of that. And I want to... This is a great building. I want to thank you for looking at the rest of the buildings in the area. We usually talk about neighborhood compatibility when it comes to our residential neighborhoods, but I think we need to look into that issue when it comes to our business districts as well. So this one will complement the City Hall, the courthouse, and the office buildings across the street. The blank wall on the east side is our concern. I mean, everyone's concerned. And I think what maybe we need to look into with, you know, talk to staff and work with staff on how can you bring some of the architectural elements from the rest of the building onto that wall? So when you look at it, it's one, you know, one building, basically, one solid, solid designed building. I think it won't be that big of a deal to bring some of the architectural elements from the rest of the buildings. And I really like what you've done on eye level, because when there are tall buildings, and the first two floors are very important when you have a pedestrian-friendly environment. And what I like about this is that the balconies that you have on the corner, the art piece on Isabel... Is it Louise or Isabel? I'm just always mix up the two streets. Is it Louise or Isabel? Isabel. Isabel. I always mix these two. As well as the publicly accessible open space. Solar panels are there as well. The sign, I don't know. I agree, I think it's a little bit of a... It may overwhelm the building, although it's up to 60 feet tall. It's on top of the building. I don't know how are we gonna sit, but I'll leave it up to the applicant and you guys to work with the staff on maybe tone it down a little bit, if you will. But one question I have, on the metal, the architectural elements that you have, it looks like a shutter, right? You know, the metal pieces that goes on the side of the building. What is the depth of those?
Those go... You're referring to the fins?
The fins, yeah.
They go around like one foot?
One foot.
And they're basically covering in most of the area, both in the tilted facade, but also the one here.
Yeah.
Sure, yeah.
They basically cover outdoors balconies, so...
Hold on, sir. Hold on, let's get you a microphone so you can be on the record.
So as I was saying, I think in almost 100% of where the fins are here, especially in the tilted area and in this area here, you have outdoor spaces, outdoor balconies behind. So basically, occupants can get out there, have a view, while also being kind of protected from the sun. So the element also kind of serves as a sustainable...
It's a great, great feature, because some of our old historic buildings in downtown, like Calfield Building, have those shutters. They move when the sun turns, but it's still there, and it's a great, great element. I think you brought that to here. And that's why I'm talking about the neighborhood compatibility, even for downtown areas, it's very important. And also, it starts from the corner, which is the highest point, and it steps down on the sides, so it won't overwhelm the police building and it won't overwhelm the neighbors to your west. So I'm all for this project as well. I want to congratulate you. This is a great design. The outdoor spaces that you have, it's amazing. I haven't seen this many outdoor areas for an office building of a 30,000, 32,000 square feet, something like that. So I'm all for this project as well, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I do like the building. I like the fact there's open space galore all around it. I agree with my colleagues regarding that western wall. There's another western wall. But that's... And I guess they're kind of similar. I mean, with its... Anyway, let's not go there. I... And I think it's interesting that some of the better designs that we've had as a city have come from these four, five-story commercial buildings, many of them office buildings. There's one down on Colorado that we approved a couple years ago that is unique in its style and its lighting as well. So I very much like the... I like the building. I'd like you to come back with something different on the creative sign. I think it's a little too... There's one on the ground floor, which I'm okay with, which is not subject to review. But the one up there at eight feet by 40 feet, I think does detract from the architectural quality. So come back, come back, if you would, and work with staff and get us something that's a little more modest, I guess is a word for that. I have no problems with adopting the mitigated negative deck. This is a Stage One and Two design, so I have no problems with that. I support the efforts to get to Lead's Gold, if that comes across, but I'm not gonna make that a condition. And obviously, the covenants were explained by Ms. Toledo. Those are necessary to go forward with this. So all in all, I think this will be a great addition to our Civic Center, our Civic Plaza, or our Civic Campus.
Among the items?
So you want to move the resolution, the motion for Stage One and Two, and the covenants?
Yes, I'll second.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I wanted to get back to the Leads, and I wanted to see if we could possibly put that in.
Oh, you want to make that a condition?
I would, I would. It's... I think it's important at this point in our environment and our city design and pedestrian. I just would like to make sure that that's a part of it.
So Title 24, is that the right title? Gets you to Lead Silver, basically, does it not?
At this point, it's quite strict, so you get a bit of the way there, yes. And we have a lot of other features that would qualify. We would have to be ready to make a design submittal in fairly short order when that... Before that we go to construction, but I think there's still time to...
So it's possible for you to...
It's still within the possible range.
So would my colleagues support making it a condition to be designed as a Lead's Gold project?
What is the difference between, just for everyone to know, from Lead's Gold and the Title 24, the Silver?
So Title 24 is really strictly the energy code, so the energy use of the building and both passive and active means. Cal Green, the Green Building Code, goes beyond that and looks also at material reuse, interior healthy environments, water savings, and location and transportation issues, and all those sorts of things. Many of those are, you know, mandatory requirements in the building code anyway, and so we are definitely complying with those. We're going beyond them in certain regards, although to this point, we haven't registered the project for Lead certification. That's a separate process through the Green Building Council.
So going from Lead Silver to Gold, how much of extra work you have to do to get there?
I...
Based on today's codes?
Based on today's codes, I think Gold would be... I haven't reviewed the potential scorecard for this, but it would seem within range to earn Gold with this project.
Okay.
Many of the features can be done. There is additional time, though, to register with Lead, and then you have to have somebody that's monitoring throughout construction. And then ultimately, you submit and get that certification. If you do want to, we would bond for the value of that in order to make sure that they get that certification. So there's some other administrative things that we do with that.
So is that a condition?
I would like to...
Moving for a condition to be placed on that? Yes. Mr. Garcia?
Condition be written such a way as subject to legal review? I'm a little concerned about imposing that condition on the project.
Okay, well, we always want to be...
Right, legal.
Subject to... So subject to legal review and approval by the city attorney's office.
Okay.
So will someone... Will the maker add that as a friendly motion? Friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment.
Okay, so the only thing we're leaving out is the sign. And I guess the... Can we just give direction to staff to work with them to come up with a better sign?
Correct. If you're not approving the creative sign proposal, then...
I don't think we're ready to approve it.
You can just give them direction.
Okay. So that'll be... I think that's council's direction. Let's have a roll call then on to A, B, D with the amendment.
One question before we move on. As far as the sign goes, do you want the sign to come back to council again for approval, or you want them to work with staff?
I'd like to see it again.
You'd like to see it, okay. All right.
Mayor.
Yes.
Sorry, with regard to the sign, is the question primarily about the size of the sign, or anything else about the way that it's designed?
Speaking for myself, it's mainly the size.
So if it's the same... Because the sign is part of the design of this project. So if it's the same sign on a smaller version, I don't know why it has to come back. Because if you want to...
They're smaller, and then they're smaller.
Right, I understand that.
Yeah, with some of it as it's facing the fins, too.
To be, you know, proportionate to the building's size, I mean, the top floor and everything else. But I mean, this is a... Let's bear in mind that this is a small project. It's not a very large, 30,000 square feet, so...
So this comes before us again anyway, will it not? This is it, final?
One, two.
Final approval.
I have no problem with the size of the sign, by the way.
If I may just interject, I think that, I mean, there is different renditions and different views. I think when you see it here, it's different, when you see it there, and we haven't completely finalized. But the intention of the sign was to somehow that the letters would merge with the, what's already a kind of pretty regular pattern of this, so it's not meant to be seen all the time and all the way.
And the sign is behind the fins, right?
Exactly. The sign is basically produced as a kind of absence of fins in some cases. So it's a bit of a shadow effect.
Yeah, the... In the location where the letters would appear, the fins would be shallower.
And this sign is based on our code. They can have a sign that size, am I correct?
Well, upon approval, I mean it's...
No, no, I mean, just sometimes, you know...
It sounds like it doesn't meet the code, and that's why you're here, that's why you're here considering creative sign.
So if it doesn't meet the code, sorry?
It's... The creative sign is just that, actually, that you create. There isn't any particular standard. There are some findings that are in your staff report, contextual criteria, design criteria, design quality, some of those things. But really, it's a little bit of free form. And so if it needs to be smaller, smaller. If it shouldn't reflect something, then that's what we're looking for.
Well, I mean, a little small is okay, but I don't want to change the whole design of the sign because...
Mr. Quintero?
Well, if it's eight by 40, I mean, that's one big sign, especially at night. During the day, I think it'll kind of blend in. At night is when I think it's really gonna stand out. I mean, I'd be happy with six by 10, or just a smaller... You've got the name, but it's not the prominent feature, especially at night.
My question is, when you were designing this project and this building, did you take the proportion of the building into consideration when you designed the sign? I'm assuming that you did. Did you?
Yes, we did. I think it was just... I mean, we considered at some point just putting the letters, and they were smaller, but we just hated the idea of like putting letters of it. So we thought about what if, you know, given the irregularity of the fins, we can actually make it be part of that. But the fins, you know, back to your early question, they're one feet and their space in different intervals. So in order to actually make the sign be part of that, we needed a certain size of the sign to be able for the things to be able to make that. I mean, even though we're using a much more dense pattern up here. So, I mean, to answer the question, we could review this certainly. If it's gonna be part of the facade, I don't think a smaller or too small of a sign would work. We will have to somehow reconsider it.
It would not work, because bear in mind, this is on the fifth floor. And what you see from the first floor on the fifth floor is not the eight-foot eye-level view of it. I'm okay with it. I mean, I would leave it up to the applicant to work with the staff and make the necessary adjustments. I don't want it to come back, honestly.
I mean, we have multinational corporations in this city with signage 200 feet above ground level that have much more modest signs than that. ground level that have much more modest signs than that. I mean, that's my point. If this was a much larger building, that's another story. Don't get any ideas. Rodney Khan and Simarustis, that's our next item. I mean, I just want to tone down. Can we give staff authority, discretion to work with them on that?
That's part of my motion.
So, I'm asking staff, is that something that you're comfortable with?
Yeah.
Who's our sign person?
Just to put it...
Bradley?
To put it into context, were this not a creative sign, and they just wanted to put a regular sign up, that would be within the limits of the sign we would allow. This is incorporated into the design, so it becomes a creative sign. If that helps with context.
Who's our sign person?
Well...
Mr. Calford is the...
Do you feel comfortable working with them, to get the general sense of what we're saying?
Yes, we do.
Doesn't have to come back to council.
We do have an idea of what you're looking for, and we can work with them to make that a more...
We're putting our trust in you then, for that. So, that's...so, you'd like to move, well...
Just make sure it's in proportion, that it doesn't end up...
So, you'd like to move to C with the direction that staff work with the architect to...I'm just restating it.
Oh.
I'm just restating it for the record, to come up with something suitable, taking into account the comments by council. So, all...is there a second to that?
I'm not second to that.
Okay, is there a second to that?
There was two different motions on the floor at the same time. There was the motion to approve items one, two, and four.
Right, so we're adding.
So, if you want to add...
We're throwing that into our...so, we'll have four on the floor.
And for the record, item one, item four will have, as amended by the language that Ms. Toledo provided in her presentation, concerning the instrument.
The covenant.
Yes.
Preliminary title report.
Right.
Pulling building permit.
Okay, I will second the motion at two C, the creative sign. Roll call.
Who was that motion by?
Is this...
Carpettian.
Is this just the creative sign, or is it...
This is all four.
All four, okay.
Councilmember Zagjanian? Carpettian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes, thank you, gentlemen.
I want to, if I make one quick comment, sir, regarding this project, I want to congratulate Dr. John as well. He provided much-needed medical services for years for people or disadvantaged, and even if they don't have any money, they will...they won't be rejected. So, they have several places, and what they do is a humanitarian effort that they do in the city, and they've done a great job. I want to thank them and congratulate them as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And it's not just this city, it's many other cities throughout the western states.
And services they provide is for disadvantaged people.
No, Mr....Dr. John is not here. We wish him well. I understand he's not doing very well at the moment, but we wish him the very best. Next...